Any of my colleagues, first of all, thank you Helen, Mrs. Harris, we really appreciate your time. Won't try to waste it, and I'd like to get this started as quickly as possible. So I'm going to mute myself. If, as it stands right now, there's not many people on, so counselors, or better yet, maybe, maybe we could just allow for the Commissioner to give us an overview, and then you guys can ask your questions if that's appropriate.
Sounds good, Mr. Chairman.
So, thank you, thank you very much for the opportunity to give you additional information about COVID and our internal vaccine distribution update. As you know, you have probably looked at the guidance and seen the various phases of vaccine distribution, and so you know that December through February, we're going to five priority groups. Those are clinical, non-clinical healthcare workers, long-term care facilities, police, fire, emergency medical services, congregate care settings, including corrections and shelters, home-based healthcare workers, and healthcare workers doing a non-COVID-facing care. So that is Phase One. That is currently where the Commonwealth is as far as vaccine distribution is concerned. The Board of Health, or the Department of Health and Human Services' role in Phase One will be to vaccinate our first responders. And so we are obviously on calls, webinars, getting education, making sure that we're sufficiently staffed to be able to do this. We will be working with AMR as one of our subcontractees around vaccine distribution for first responders, if that's necessary. Right now, the Police Commissioner says that about 70% of her sworn officers are, I'm sorry, yes, 70% of her sworn officers are wanting to take the vaccine at this point. That's 275 of her officers, and 35 of her civilian staff is willing to take the vaccine. Firefighters are 120, plus 12 dispatch who are in line to take the vaccine. So we're gearing up, hopefully, when we get through the first phase of Phase One, to be able to work with them. As all of you know, Phase One, it goes by category, and so the first is the clinical individuals who are doing direct and COVID-facing care. Then they'll move to long-term care facilities, and then police, fire, and EMS will be third. Congregate shelters will be fourth, and then home-based workers, and then healthcare workers doing non-COVID-facing care. Phase Two, which is in February through March, is individuals with two or more comorbidities. You know, comorbidities, high blood pressure, diabetes, cardiovascular disease is something that will be considered as decisions are made about that. As decisions are made about that, I'm sorry. And so Phase Two is comorbidities, and then early education, teachers, K through 12, adults 65 or over, and then individuals with one comorbidity condition. And then Phase Three is starting in April 2021 or before, hopefully, will be the public, the general public that we will be working with and vaccinating. So, right now, internally for the city, we're in the process of setting up a vaccine committee that's going to help us, or a task force that's going to help us, that is trusted voices, that we will be working with in order to get the accurate information out. There is a lot of vaccine resistance, there's a lot of vaccine hesitancy, and so we want to make sure that we are getting information that is credible and concrete. Many people are giving information about the vaccine, some of it's correct, some of it's not. So we want to make sure that we are giving information to our residents. I do have the names of some of the task force members, if you'd like that, but I'll stop there and ask if there's any questions about what I've said.
Mr. Chairman.
Sorry, gentlemen. Counselor Letterman.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair and Commissioner. Thanks for being with us for all of your incredible work throughout the pandemic and to your team as well. I was wondering if you could talk a little bit about our actual distribution strategy, and I do want to know the members of the task force you're putting together. But what I'm curious about is, in terms of distribution, are we envisioning setting up sites similar to how we've done with testing through AMR, which I think has been very, has been a good model? Or are you, or rather, are you thinking that you're going to see this distributed through private providers or pharmacies? What are your thoughts on how that will move forward?
Well, I think, Counselor Letterman, thank you for that question. It's a good one. I think we're going to use all of our resources. There will be distribution through CVS as well as Walmart of the city. We have a plan that is a continuity of operations plan and an emergency dispensing site plan. So that's what we've used in the past, our emergency dispensing site plans. We usually, in the past, have used Central, but we have identified throughout the city about five sites that we can put in operation should we need to, to do that. So all of the strategies that you mentioned will be things that we're going to consider using. We do not have a concrete, because we don't know exactly when the vaccine is coming. I should say that the state tells us to expect Moderna as the vaccine that's going to be distributed, because they believe there's going to be more ability to get that in a timely way. You know that Pfizer, Massachusetts, did not get 20% of its vaccine distribution that was anticipated. And so, once we have the vaccine, we certainly will be able to gear up quickly. We are half-trained for that as a department, and of course, Walgreens and CVS will be doing the long-term care facilities in Massachusetts. We will be working with AMR. The only challenge around using our EDS as an emergency dispensing site is that we'll have people indoors, and ideally, we'd like to do this vaccinations in a place where people, you know, can feel comfortable, and many people feel comfortable outdoors. But most of it's being done in indoor settings, so I think we'll be fine.
Mr. Chair, if I might, Commissioner, I guess I'm just curious if we're using sort of multiple points of distribution, how, how we're gonna, I know the fire's two doses, and so I guess what I'm curious is, is how will, how will we work to make sure that we follow up with individuals who have come forward to receive the first dose when we might have so many different, so many different actors involved? I'm sort of especially concerned with the sort of Walmart and Walgreens and CVS pharmacy aspect of it. In other words, will we all be talking to each other to make sure that everybody's on the same page?
Yes, the technology and the communication strategies are being formed by DPH now. So everyone should be following the same strategy around identification and follow up with those individuals who received the first dose. So three weeks later, the individual will get a notification, most likely a text, that will tell them that it is time for them to get their second shot, and they will be scheduled at that same time. So we'll keep concrete database. You know, Counselor Letterman, we, this is the first time we are, as a state and as a nation, attempting to do something on this large scale. So as much as we plan, there are likely to be glitches. We hope not. But yes, everyone should have the same database so that we know that Helen Carlton is in that database, and she should, she's at CBS, so don't give her her shot at the EDS site, for example. So that level of coordination around going back to the initial provider who gives the immunization is going to be critical, and I think we're kind of still making sure we're working that out.
All right, I have a couple more questions, but I'll yield to my colleagues. Commissioner, thank you so much.
Mr. Chair, you muted, sir.
Counselor Dabila.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do believe Counselor Allen had some initial firsts.
Please, Counselor Allen, I didn't look at it. I just, there's only six of us, or five of us on here. I didn't even look at it.
It's fine. I defer to Counselor Dabila.
Thank you, Counselor Allen. Commissioner, thank you for that good overview. I do have several questions. But the first one is, how are we going to cover this in terms of costs? There's going to be some more care money available?
Yes, right now, the cost will be absorbed by the Commonwealth, and as you know, the package that was hopefully passed last night will have additional funding for states for vaccine distribution. So I believe, to the degree we can, we will bill third parties, but it is not anticipate that we're billing individuals or that individuals are having to pay out of pocket.
Do you have a rough idea how much the Commonwealth is going to contribute?
I do not. Again, I think additional money is going to be, right now, the Commonwealth is not participating or paying for vaccine administration. So the vaccine itself is paid for, but the, to administer the vaccine is not paid for by the Commonwealth. That is when we will bill, as we do with flu, we'll bill third-party providers to get cost reimbursement for that. Right now, I don't know what that reimbursement is at this point, but we are very skilled as a department, and I know that all the pharmacy are, are, all the pharmacies are in billing third party.
Excellent. Now, Commissioner, you talked about the five different phases that are going to be followed initially, and here in Springfield, I believe you mentioned that Springfield Police, Fire are going to be in front of the line getting, getting the vaccine. Does that include EMS, or is EMS going to have their own plan?
It does include EMS.
It does? Okay.
Yes.
Do you have a rough idea how many from EMS are going to be vaccinated?
I do not. They, I did not survey the EMS providers, because they're not just serving the city of Springfield, as you know. They're region-wide, and so I was pretty much just gathering the data on our city first responders.
So roughly, how many, how many vaccination do you expect to receive on the first batch?
I do not know. So I think because the Commonwealth, we have gotten less vaccine than we thought. Moderna, we should get within the next couple of days. We expect there's going to be more Moderna than there was Pfizer. So we should see an increase. We should see it going faster. And so, but what's that exact number that we're going to get? That's why we're asking the numbers of first responders and the numbers of, yeah, first responders, fire, police, so we have an idea of what we need for that quadra of individuals.
Right. And my final question before I yield to my colleagues. In terms of, you identify several people, but in terms of government itself, I do believe some of the states and the federal government are identifying key positions and key elected officials to receive vaccination as well as a way to issue a continuity of government. Is that something that we're planning or thinking of doing here in Springfield?
Absolutely, but I also think that that's something that we're going to, as a city and as a state, I think that guidance will be put out for us, Counselor. Also, the team that has been put together by the city that will be announced, our task force has several physicians on it, and individuals hopefully will be able to guide us in many areas, but certainly, who in the city government should have preference as far as immunizations are concerned. But again, I think the state will also help us with that.
Very well, and I will, I will loop around with some more questions, but I yield to my colleagues. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Counselor Allen, please.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Thanks, Helen, for being here and for all your work on this. I'm curious about the, is there a master list, like, like, when it's, are you going to have a list of the people in Springfield, Mass. who are eligible for the vaccine in Phase One or in Phase Two? Or are people supposed to just keep track of their own selves, kind of thing?
You mean the individuals in each category who will be eligible? We do not have a list. What we will ask, obviously, is for identification. Obviously, the hospitals know who's within their system, and so that's, that's the easier part. The first responders will be looking at identifications and asking people to identify themselves based on category. It is not known whether individuals with comorbidities will require a physician's note to say, yes, Helen has diabetes and high blood pressure, for example, so she fits into that category. So that process is something that we will need to work out and make sure that we're being effective in reaching those individuals who are highest at risk.
Okay, so when it is your category, when your, when your number comes up, so to speak, you just, there'll be some direction as to where to go to get your vaccine, as to whether it's CVS or Walgreens or whatever. And once, once you get it, you'll be entered into the system, and then there'll be a notification for your second visit a month later?
Yes, three weeks later for Pfizer, and I believe four weeks later for Moderna, yes.
Okay, and I know Counselor Dabila asked about cost, the reimbursement, but is there a cost, out-of-pocket cost, when you're in the line and getting the vaccine?
We will have individuals there, just as we do during flu season. We have our frontline staff who are there, who are taking insurance information so that we can bill third party. But like flu shots, we will not turn anybody away, because they do not have the ability, they don't have insurance, for example.
Okay, and the cost, the vaccine itself has been paid for, but the cost is for the people who are providing the service of giving the vaccine?
That's correct. The administration of the vaccine is the cost. The vaccine itself has been paid for by the federal government and shipped to the states.
Thank you. One last question. So CBS and Walgreens, you actually, you mentioned Walmart. Was that, was that just, did you mean Walmart, or did you mean Walgreens?
It is Walgreens and CBS who are under contract. If I said Walgreens, I apologize. I, Walmart, I apologize.
Okay, thank you. I'll sit for now.
Counselor Dabila or Letterman, either of you have any another question? Yes.
I do, but I yield to Counselor.
Counselor Letterman, please.
So Commissioner, talk more about the educational strategies that the administration plans to employ. Especially, I think, you know, we are going to be, I'm sure, beginning to receive outreach from constituents with questions about the vaccine. Where should we kind of refer folks to get those answers? And what is the administration's plans for community education so that people can understand, you know, the vaccine clearly and be able to get that information?
Thank you, Counselor Letterman. That really is one of my biggest concerns, is that we are getting credible information out to the community. And so, for individuals, what I recommend is that individuals contact their primary care providers if they have comorbidities. I want individuals to feel comfortable that they are getting accurate information as far as the vaccine is concerned. We, again, have a task force that will come online on Monday, and we are working on a communication strategies. On that task force are several physicians, and they are going to be prepared to receive calls if necessary. But the first line, I believe, for individuals with questions should be a trusted medical provider, particularly if they have comorbidities. The task force or the group of individuals who will come together will develop educational strategy. For example, we're talking about Focus Springfield and having individuals who are trusted voices do PSAs so that they are saying to the public, because they have educated themselves, this vaccine is safe. We recommend that you take it, and that people know the facts, because again, there's a lot of misinformation out there at this point.
And Commissioner, where can, can we, as elected officials, go to get those facts and learn more?
Well, you can go to DPH's website. They have lots of information there around vaccine information. But one of the challenges is, as a layperson, is looking at the data as it comes out and interpreting it in a way that the average person can say, you know, that makes sense. I understand now. And that, that, that is why we are going to, we have this task force that will be announced. So I think the website from DPH does a good job. We have additional information on our website as well. But as far as speaking to an individual is concerned, I call the epidemiologists at the state lab, and they always put that data information up on the state's website. So that's a beginning place.
All right, thank you so much, and, you know, I just wanted to say also, relative to a comment made earlier, I certainly understand and appreciate the continuity of government steps that might have been made at some levels. But I would really want to make sure that first responders and frontline workers and individuals who, you know, need to, need to go to work to provide for their families outside of their home, get this vaccine in first order. So I'll be interested to see what that looks like, but I think it's very important. I certainly am very fortunate to be able to conduct my duties from the safety of my home, and I want to make sure that those that are not able to do that are first in line for the vaccine.
Well, thank you, Counselor Letterman. You have always been concerned about individuals in their everyday lives and how they're making it through really difficult times. So I will, obviously, I think all of us want to keep our eye on this vaccine, how it's being distributed, where it's being distributed geographically, because we have already noticed some geographical disparity as far as vaccine distribution is concerned. So I'm, obviously, I'm going to lean on the city council to help me make the case that we always need to fight for Western Massachusetts and making sure that there's equitable distribution. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Counselor Dabila, do you have any questions?
I do. I just got to sort of wrap it up. Commissioner, going back to the vaccination, do we have a timeline as to when we expect them to arrive and when we expect this plan to start being rolling out?
Thank you, Counselor. That is an excellent question. Right now, they're telling us the end of March or April for general population. Is that what you're asking about? When the average person might be able to get their vaccination?
Actually, both, average person and the initial phase that you were talking about with frontline workers.
The initial phase is going on right now. So Mercy Medical Center and Bay State Health has vaccine. Obviously, they do not have enough, so we're hopeful that they're working through their front, their COVID-facing, and that's those individuals who are working directly with individuals who are COVID-positive. They're working through making sure those individuals will get vaccinated first. But vaccinations are happening slowly, but we anticipate, again, when Moderna comes online, that there will be, we'll be able to get more individuals vaccinated.
But in terms of our guys in the fire department or this police department, can they go to the Mercy or Bay State, or do they have to go through one of our contractors?
Well, Counselor, it's not their time. So remember, this, these phases are in order. So December through February is the, this is, these are the priority group, but they are after clinical and non-clinical healthcare workers doing direct care. And that means individuals who are cleaning the rooms and, you know, who are working in housekeeping on those units. They are part of the first response that is happening right now, and then long-term care facilities will happen next. That's when we see CBS and Walgreens coming on board, and then after that, police and fire are third. So we'll know, you know, when we get to that third bullet, which is police and fire, certainly, and that's why we are having conversations and planning now, putting our plans in place. We have to send our plans, as a municipality or as a Board of Health, to the state for approval, and we're in that process now.
So will I be correct, then, if I make an educated assumption that it's going to be before March?
I think for general populate, oh, you're talking about for first responders?
Yeah, first responders, fire.
Absolutely. I expect that at the latest, it will be February.
Okay, excellent. And Commissioner, if I may, you did talk about the vaccination committee, the trusted voices, and I do like the PCA ideas, and you're right, we have to disseminate accurate, reliable information to the public. If possible, can you let us know who's going to be in that committee? And also, as a subsequent, sub-question to that, I'm just kind of curious, how are we going to penetrate the, the resistance that there appears to be building up in the minority communities to the vaccination?
Well, Counselor, that's an excellent question. It's one we're all wrestling with. But I think that it's important to acknowledge the, the history of vaccinations, particularly in communities of color, and that there is some distrust there, and how do we break through that? And we hope that it's the educational process that we're putting together. The physicians, the three physicians that I can tell you, I know are on the committee, Dr. Scavran has a long history of working in the community. Dr. Balder has a long history of working in the community. Dr. McAdoo is a very trusted voice as far as the community is concerned. There are others on the committee, like Jose Claudio from New North Citizens Council. So we're looking, we're looking broadly at people who can educate and that the community trusts to make decisions, to help them make decisions.
Is the clergy involved in that list, Commissioner?
Yes, I have the, on my medical reserve corps, and I didn't mention the medical reserve corps. The head of the medical reserve corps is Elsie Sanchez, who is an excellent communicator. She, yeah, yeah, she's very, very good, and her, and her pastor, whose name is escaping me right now, who has the largest church in the north, and you may know who I'm referring to. He's also on the medical reserve corps. He will be a part of the committee as well.
Excellent, excellent. My compliments, Commissioner. It seems like we have a, we, we in progress, or we in line to, to really tackle this forward, and please let me know how I can, so in the private capacity or as a member of this distinguished body, I can help out to ensure that we get vaccinated. And as you mentioned, that we get vaccinations in a timely fashion, that we're getting equitable distribution for at least, it is fully acknowledged. That's one of my biggest concern, that we don't get a fair share in the city of Springfield. And so I, from the bottom of my heart, I thank you for your hard work. I realize you've been fantastic during this pandemic. If I may, just one more suggestion. If you have the data in front of you, that would be fine. Would you be able to tell me what, will, how many cases do we have so far? And if we can, as a body, be kept aware of the COVID-19 cases? It seems like we are not getting them, at least I can see them, but I would like to get some, if possible, real-time snapshots to what's happening.
Certainly, I'm happy to do that. First of all, let me back up and say thank you. The city council for the city of Springfield, you're putting pressure to say we need more testing sites. You're using your voices to say, you know, we need equitable distribution. It's something that I'm going to continue to hope that you will do, and thinking about the vaccine particularly, and, and where it is, and, and just making sure your voices as a council are being heard at the state level. So thank you for what you've done and what I anticipate you will do. Each Monday, or it's up now, the data that I have is put up on the city's website. So you can find it there, but I'm happy to, if it would be, are you asking for daily data? Because the daily data from last week should be up right now, and you can take a look at it.
I don't want to create more work for you, but I feel, I know that on the city website, I know about the every Monday updates, but sometimes we're not able to get it, or for whatever reason, or the duties. And I personally feel that if we could get And I personally feel that if we could get something as simple as an email, whether it be daily or weekly, saying to the council members, this is the snapshot for this time period, it would be, at least for me, it would be more helpful to, to get a gauge. As I do have people that ask me here in my ward, what's going on, what is the city doing? And I want to be able to provide as more accurate data as possible.
I will do that. So what I will do is send the data report over to the city council office and I will ask them to forward it to each city councillor so that you have it. So we are obviously still in a surge. Forty-one percent of our cases last week were 30 and under, 31% were 31 to 50. Fifty-one in older was 28%. That group increased by 2%, which really concerns me. When we start to see older infections in the older population, those are the individuals who will wind up in our hospitals. And so that group, we keep a close eye on as far as infections are concerned. But it's pretty, the zip codes, again, I, what I'm going to do after this call is just send the report over to the city council office and ask her just to put it up. Do you want the cases on a daily basis? Because I, I mean, I certainly can send the number of cases every day to the city council office and then you can be updated that way if you would like.
I, I personally would like that very much. If it's not burdening on you, that would be fantastic.
No, I can do that. I can do that very easily.
Thank you, Commissioner. And I may say, I know you work in days, but I am very concerned with after Christmas. I hope I'm wrong. But, you know, this are, this are going to, I feel that this are going to be, we are in a crossroad here in terms of a community, as a country and the world, actually. So I have high hopes and we're going to tackle this and we're going to survive this because we are Springfield strong. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you very much. Again, I appreciate your support and hope to continue to have it as we do go through what a surge on top of a surge. And then as we start to roll out this vaccination process, you are trusted voices as well. And so, you know, I would, I think it's important for you to educate yourselves around the vaccine to the degree you can so that when your constituents do ask questions, you have the answers or reach out to individuals that you trust to give you good information. But thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Counselors, either of you have any closing comments or questions?
No, Mr. Chairman. Thank you so much for calling the meeting. I am fine.
Great information though. Thank you, Helen.
Well, thank you all. I appreciate your time. Thank you, Counselor Edwards, for your time as well.
Well, I want to thank everybody. Obviously, we've just taken each other. I hope to see all of you after the holiday and wish God's blessing upon you all. And Helen, you are, you know, we just keep beating ourselves, beating a dead horse, talking about how much we appreciate you. But it's sincere and the city has benefits and has for many, many years from your service. So we thank you. To my colleagues, all be well. God bless your families. Please, everyone, be safe and follow the protocols. Thank you.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas, everybody.
Thank you.